Evening, everybody. I'd like to call this meeting, this regular meeting of the Hinkley Township Board of Trustees Order on Tuesday, September 5th at 6:30 PM. Call the roll, please. Here?
Asher.
Here.
Obviously.
Here.
And also, we have fiscal officer Martha Cathwood, Fire Chief, Mr. Rosenbaum.
Good evening.
I'd like to ask everybody to join in honoring the flag.
Congratulations to the flag in the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Yes.
You're not chief 2.0 tonight.
No. No. Now, move to approve the minutes for the August 15, 2023, regular trustee meeting.
I'm going to abstain. Second.
Second by Asher. All in favor?
Aye.
Move to approve the minutes for the August 17, 2023, special trustee meeting.
Second.
Second by Augustine. All in favor?
Aye. I will abstain.
Move to approve the minutes for the August 22, 2023 trustee public hearing meeting.
Second.
Second by Augustine. All in favor?
Aye.
Move to approve the minutes for the August 30, 2023, special trustee meeting.
Second.
Second by Augustine. All in favor?
Aye.
Chief, I'm going to let you go first.
Thank you. I appreciate it. Request appropriations for $1,510.50 for 19 SCBA air packs and 14 of the extra face pieces for their annual flow testing from Fire Safety Services.
So moved. Second.
Everybody, Augustine, discussion?
None.
All in favor?
Aye.
Next is request appropriations for $3,097.50 for a fire safety house for inflatable images. The Fireman's Association will split the other cost with it. The association approached about doing a joint safety house since the one that the three townships got through a grant 20, almost 25 years ago, is completely falling apart. And the association would prefer that they split the money with us because that's from the community benefit fund. So all of it always is staying within the township. So I like the idea. We use it a lot through touch truck. We do a couple of safety fairs. And then we're going to try and get back out in the communities next year like we did pre-pandemic.
Okay.
So I'd like to see about splitting the cost with the Fireman's Association.
So it won't be used with Granger?
No, it'll be ours.
Perfect.
They'll put our banner on it. We'll get our logo on it. The associations had just put the fire department logo. They're not looking to have their logo or anything. They just said do it for the fire department.
Perfect.
So.
And the total cost on that is $6,195. And it's being split in half.
Yes, correct. There is no freight because it's right in Brunswick. I talked to her today. She can split the invoice to have it two. One can come to us. One will go to the association. We can go up there and pick it up. They have three of them on stock right now, and they'll be able to invoice us. So I'd like to see us get a new safety house.
Did you get an answer as to a warranty on that?
No, I did not. I'm sorry. I will double check for the next meeting for you guys. I completely forgot about that.
Okay.
So I apologize.
So moved. Second.
Augustine, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Next is request appropriations for $1,112.58 for renewal, one vector checks for the station and six vector check it for the vehicles from Vector Solutions, Target Solutions. This is what we use for our daily, weekly, bi-monthly, and monthly vehicle and station checks to keep everything up. And that's what creates our work orders if we have anything go down.
So moved. I'm going to second, but I'm going to amend it to $1,212.58. I think you said 1,112.
Oh, I'm sorry. Thank you.
Moved as amended. Second.
Second by Augustine. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
So I'd like to make our request appropriations not to see $1,800 of materials from Home Depot to help build the storage room in our training building. The association, so the history of the training building, the association paid to have that building concreted. And then we got a grant, or Hinkley Roofing donated the roofing material. And then we got a grant from Home Depot to build the inside up as a training. The association also has said last year, year before, they would buy the garage door there. And we have talked in the past about we don't have enough storage in the fire station for different things. So I'd like to make up there a room of bulk storage to have excess turnout gear, bulk medical supplies, bulk hazardous materials, seasonal stuff. And then inside the fire station storeroom would be a bin of our active shooter kit, a water rescue kit. Like we'd have different things. So in emergency situations, guys can grab them, throw them in the pickup truck and respond instead of just everything being crammed into the training room or in the storage room.
Very good. So moved. Second. Glad to see it come to fruition.
Me too.
Augustine, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Next is something I'm happy and proud of. I had two of my guys pass paramedic program, two of eight, eight or nine that we have enrolled. So I'd like to request change the hourly pay rate of firefighter, paramedic Anthony McCarrick and Matthew Marinella from their 1623 an hour to 1854 an hour based on the organizational minutes effective August 20th, 2023.
So they were both over the moon.
Yes, they were. I am so proud of those guys.
Yeah, that's.
That's a year of their life that they have dedicated a lot of hours.
Yeah, they should be proud. So should you.
Yep.
So moved. Second.
Augustine, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Request the accepted, or request to accept the resignation of firefighter, paramedic, Dave Inman, effective immediately with his family that he's got. He, the, it's harder for him to find daycare on it for, so he's basically backing off and he's working full-time at Broadby Heights. I believe you got the email and the letter of resignation, which was very, a very nice email that he sent. He will be missed. He was one of our Cleveland EMS dies. But he did a lot for us in the time of filling shifts and all that. So I appreciate.
It was a really nice resignation.
Yes, it was.
So moved. Second.
Second by Augustine. Chief, if you extend our thanks.
I definitely will. Thank you.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Um, so motion to donate 17 SCBA air packs, 30 bottles, and 17 air masks that have no value to the fire department due to their age to Medina County Career Center Fire Training Program. These were our air packs that we had up until we received our federal grant of the brand-new ones. And in the grant stipulations, we could either dispose of them or we could donate them. We could not, they're in their outdated date. They were there on the verge of being outdated. They expire this year. So they can go to the Career Center and be used for a training of students and as a instructor there, there, we have old, old ones that are well past even being able to be used. So this would be appreciated by the Career Center.
And the reason that we are also donating the bottles and the 17 masks is because the packs that we got last year is a different manufacturer.
Different manufacturer.
These were not compatible.
We had Scott. Scott was our old manufacturer. These are MSA. So there's no cross-use on them. The only thing we're holding on to is the rapid intervention pack because that is set up for down firefighter and that's made universal. So we can use it on, you know, going to Brunswick because they have MSA or going to Granger because they have Scott or even for our guys because of the connections. But other than that, everything else is obsolete for us and outdated.
So moved. Second.
Augustine, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
So just a couple of quick items. Touch truck is October 4th, or I'm sorry, October 1st from 1:00 to 4:00 PM at the fire station and the service department grounds. It looks like we may have some new vehicles there this year, which will be exciting. Next blood drive is September 16th, and it'll be at the old fire station. For anybody that follows us on social media, you've been seeing us plaster the Tunnel to the Tower. This is the 10th anniversary of it in Medina, which is a 5K race. We have, as of Friday, we had 17 people on our team, and we have blown away our record in fundraising. This will be our third year, if we can hold on to it, to be the highest fundraiser in the county for this one. So I'm very proud of that. It's a very great organization. It pays for mortgages for wounded soldier, severely wounded soldiers, or fallen firefighters and police officers. And they've done, I think, five or six in the state of Ohio in recent years, which is unfortunately sad because they all have been line-of-duty deaths. We got an email for a letter from Mark's Radios, and they're saying our subscription fee of $10 radio is going down to $5 per radio.
Okay.
We don't know how long that'll last. It's, we're up and running on them, but hey, I'll take it.
Take it.
And the other great thing is Ohio EMS Grant said, hey, we got more money. So we're going to give, go from $300 to $1,200.
Very good. Well done.
They said they got more money somehow, and we got the email saying, hey, here's more money.
Fantastic.
So I'll take it. That is all I have.
And on a high note. I like it.
Yeah, yes. I always like getting free money from different grants.
Did you have anything else for the chief?
No.
Good evening.
Thank you guys very much. Everybody be safe.
Martha?
I just need to resend the resolution we made at the last meeting. It's 081523-02. I was trying to squeeze out some more money in the zoning line, but that was not, I wasn't able to do that. So from here on in, Tom Soblotny and Judy will come out of the general fund.
So moved.
Second.
Second by Asher. All in favor?
Aye.
We have a guest speaker, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, anything else, Martha?
No, that's it. Thanks.
All right. Before we get there, I'll move to pay the bills in the amount of $352,456.78.
Second.
Second by Asher. All in favor?
Aye.
The speaker, is this Mr. Crane from Davie Resources to speak on the facilities planning area, ma'am? Welcome.
Thank you for your time. Travis Crane, Davie Resource Group, address is 1310 Sharon Copley Road. We're here before you tonight to request, we need approval from the trustees of Hinkley Township to assist a Medina County sanitary engineer in filing an amendment to the FPA facilities planning area. That's a NOACA acronym determining what areas of the county and townships and cities are serviced by public sewer and onsite septic systems. So my client, John Smody, is here with me tonight. We proposed a project, I think it was four years ago, and got approval to do a project off of West 130th Street, south of Laurel Road. And it was, at that time, it was planned to be onsite septic systems. From then to now, that sewer's been extended from 71 through a Drees project in Brunswick Hills. And the sewer's now pretty much right at Mr. Smody's doorstep. So we'd like to take advantage of that, switch the project from onsite septic to public sewer. Basically, the effect is the, you know, the homeowners won't have their property encumbered by septic mounts and septic systems. And it's a really positive for the environment, too. So instead of that sewage effluent from the homes going into the ground and treated by the septic systems, it'll actually be going into the public sewer. The county sanitary engineer supports this. He technically is the one who files the application with NOACA. The property owner, the developer does not file the application. So in part of the processes, the township has to agree to that. So we need a letter of support from the trustees.
Thank you.
Lot of acronyms I threw out, NOACA, FPA, yada, yada, yada. So if there's any questions, there are no dumb questions on that. So it's a very fairly complex subject matter, but basically it boils down to onsite septic systems or public sewer.
Any discussion?
No, I had Suzanne draft a letter of support. If the trustees are in agreement, we can go ahead and sign today. I think they have a meeting tomorrow.
Yeah, so where the application was actually due, I think, last week, and NOACA has extended it for us. So if we can file, the county sanitary engineer is able to file his application tomorrow. So it's last minute notice, we'd like to leave tonight with a letter from Hinkley Township in support, so he can get that application in tomorrow.
Yeah, I spoke with Jeremy, and it seems there is really no impact to the township. We're not doing anything to put that sewer in.
Correct.
You'll be deriving it from infrastructure that's already in place. So I have no objection to it.
I think there's environmental impact, positive environmental impact to the township and the neighbors.
I have no objection to any type of infrastructure that will benefit the township in the long run.
I did not speak to Jeremy, but if you spoke to Jeremy and Jeremy had no objection to it, then I would not object.
You did. It's adjacent to properties that are already utilizing the same.
Yes, sir.
So it's just a continuation for that piece that's already in place.
I'm going to go ahead and sign the letter, and I'm going to pass it down. Everyone's in agreement, please?
Thank you very much for your time tonight. Really appreciate it.
And then I have to run a copy before you go.
Okay.
According to my note here.
Okay.
A little post-it note telling me.
Make a copy.
Thank you.
Have a good night.
Good evening. For the police, I have. We will move to approve the purchase and installation of equipment through North Coast Two Way Radio to include the removal and installation of repurposed equipment for the two new Hinkley Police Department 2023 Ford Interceptor Utility Police Cruisers. The cost per vehicle is $13,439.36 for a total amount of $26,878.72.
Second.
Second by Asher. Any discussion? Call roll, please.
Oh.
No, no, all in favor. I'm sorry. Wrong one. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I'm sorry, I didn't know what this was for.
This was the installation equipment through North Coast Two Way Radio.
Okay.
Okay.
Police. Very good. Aye.
Very good. And that's all we have for police. The service department, I will move for a resolution authorizing Hinkley Township to prepare and submit an application to participate in the Ohio Public Works Mission State Capital Improvement and/or Local Transportation Improvement Programs and to execute contracts as required. Whereas the State Capital Improvement Program and the Local Transportation Improvement Program both provide financial assistance to political subdivisions for capital improvements to public infrastructure. And whereas Hinkley Township is planning to make capital improvements to TH357 Valleybrook Boulevard, TH360 Valleybrook Oval, and TH353 Salem Court. Whereas the infrastructure improvement herein above described is considered to be a priority need for the community and is a qualified project under the OPWC programs, now therefore be resolved by Hinkley Township. Section 1, Hinkley Township Trustee Jack Sweattick is hereby authorized to apply to the OPWC for funds as described above. Section 2, Hinkley Township Trustee Jack Sweattick is authorized to enter into any agreements as may be necessary and appropriate for obtaining this financial assistance.
Second.
Seconded by Asher. Any discussion?
I just want the public to know that this is not, this is the exact same grant that the consultant had come in and suggested that we utilize for the water infrastructure and town center. So just wanted the public to be aware of that.
Call the roll, please.
Sweden?
Yes.
Asher?
Yes. Yes.
We'll now move to adopt resolution approving payment to the Medina County Soil and Water Conservation District to support public education and outreach in the amount of $1,651.
Second.
Seconded by Asher. This is a program that the County Soil and Water Conservation District does that puts us in compliance.
Sweden?
Yes.
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 Okay. We will go to zoning.
I just wanted to let everyone know that Country Book Cove and Rock Ridge Estates will be on tomorrow evening's Planning Commission meeting at Medina County Planning Commission. The agenda starts at 6:30. So just wanted to offer that information. If anyone would like me to email it to them or review it with them, I'm happy to do that. Just call me or email me. Also wanted to offer clarification that the Medina County Planning Concept Meetings are open to the public but are not public meetings. They're not advertised. There's no decision voting or meeting minutes that occur. We have a motion to purchase training through the OTA, updates to the Robert Rules of Order for Augustine and Peterlin for a total of $40, and self-help remedies for junk vehicles and trash for Augustine, Peterlin, Wilson, and Tom Soblotny, who is not a member. So his fee is a little different for a total of $90. If we combine them all, the motion is for a total of $130.
Second.
Second by Asher. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Hi. I just wanted to update everyone here on the 25 River Road. In lieu of recent events, we were encouraged by the Medina County Prosecutor's Office to maintain the resolution as it currently exists. This affords the family 60 days to begin work, and the township can assist them in garnering the salvaged titles for their vehicles, which I'm told are tedious process to obtain. Should the property not be cleaned up in a timely fashion, then the board can reevaluate for the order. Further, in an effort to create and streamline the process to monitor, aid, and strengthen transparency, the resident and/or his family must contact the Hinkley Township zoning department and have conversation with either them or the prosecutor's office. That proper line of communication is very important in our reporting and tracking and documentation so that our zoning department can report back to this board. And that's all I have for zoning.
Good.
Cemeteries. We have, excuse me, four additional plots that were garnered secondary to a tree being removed. This is in an older section of Maple Hill Cemetery. We don't typically sell in this section because it is a kind of a sold-out area. Because of the tree being removed, we do have someone who is interested in obtaining those four plots to be closer to their family. This is probably the best way to utilize the land that we have existing in that cemetery. And after speaking with Service Superintendent Mike Bahari and Cemetery Sexton Suzanne Peterlin, they are in agreement that the new lots are available and a viable option. We just need trustee approval to go ahead and transfer to and purchase to.
Which cemetery was this?
Maple Hill. They have two existing plots in another part of the cemetery, but they'd like to be closer to family. Is this with you or Jack?
I have no objection.
Okay. Do you have any objection, trustee Sweattick?
No.
Perfect. We will go ahead and let the citizen know. That's all I have for cemeteries. Should I continue on?
Please.
I just wanted to have a request for prayer prior to the meeting as I've recently been ordained. The Medina County Commissioners, as well as several townships in Medina County, do begin their meetings with a prayer. So I would like the board to just consider my request. It doesn't have to be something that we decide on this evening. Any questions on that before I move forward? Clarifying that the board is extending their gratitude to Greensmith Garden Center because we were able to obtain the native red bud trees. I know that was an issue in the past couple of months, obtaining a native tree. They will be planting and donating the trees in the fall. So I just wanted to clarify that since I wasn't at the last meeting. Also encouraging citizens to reach out to the State House and Senate regarding House Bill 257. This is for virtual meetings for public bodies, and it's primarily sponsored by James Hoops and Thaddeus Claggett. This bill would allow for virtual meetings and attendance again. I know that back in 2020 was the first time in the history of Ohio that we were allowed virtual attendance and meetings secondary to COVID. And we've kind of gone on and off with it. Here in Hinkley Township, we spent significant dollars on this virtual system, and it's wonderful and used all the time with our YouTube videos. We were able to go back and re-watch it ourselves. I know that it helps our secretaries as well. So if we could have attendance that way, that would be encouraged. So if you're interested in supporting that, please feel free to reach out to your local state House and Senate representatives. Any questions on that, trustees?
And it specifically excludes township, Board of Trustees, as well as other governing bodies.
I understand. But just for in general, I see the benefit of it and think it's a great thing to support.
Okay.
Hinkley Lake update. I know we've gotten so many questions on this, so I just wanted to address it. The dredging of Hinkley Lake should begin on September 18th. That's the time that Metro Parks has designated in an effort to remove additional silt from the bottom of the lake, as well as repair the dam that was originally built about 100 years ago. The project is supposed to cost between $9 to $10 million, and they hope to have it completed by the summer of 2026. Staging will occur all around the lake, so the reservation will remain open, but the lake itself will not. And I know that at the last meeting, you guys spoke about the flag retirement. There were some really good ideas that came out. It was published in a local newspaper, and Mark Pribish reached out to me. He is the maintenance director at Riverwoods Nature Preserve. He emailed me and said that he also has room at that facility, the Riverwoods Preserve. It's a viable option for bearing retired flags. And he said it also hosts the memorials for the Millers and trustee Ray Schulte. So just another thing for the board to consider when we are talking about the retirement of Moving right along, I wanted to just mention that the 2015 Comprehensive Plan, Section EC3, page 46, objections and actions, objective ED3, identify new ways to enhance the competitiveness of existing economic centers. This outlines creating a joint economic development district or a JUD with the city of Brunswick that includes the property along West 130th Street. Use revenue from the new JUD to extend sewer and water further south along West 130th Street and collaborate with neighboring communities to promote development along the western boundary of the township's new development through creative economic development strategies. This is a way, and I don't know if you guys have looked at it, it's something that I talked about when I was, when I was testifying at the annexation hearing in front of the commissioners. It was brought up, the JUD. It is in the comprehensive plan. There is a directive to move forward with one in June of 2008. I'm sorry, there was a feasibility study that was done by Cleveland State University between the city of Brunswick and Hinkley Township to avoid further annexation. I think this is something that we should definitely look into. I don't, I don't have a preference as to whether we move forward with one or not, but I just think it's something that we should explore. And I encourage you to look at the 2008 study if you get an opportunity. Suzanne has it electronically that she can send it over to you.
Can I mention, I was a trustee at the time of that study, and it wasn't viable. The majority of the area that was designated in that study was the Lutheran Cemetery. I don't think the Lutheran Cemetery is going to become a JUD district. And when we looked at it, at the 2015 Comprehensive Plan update, we looked at specifically the area down by 71, which at that time, though it's Brunswick Hills, Medina, it's the conglomeration. That was the area that was discussed as being, if anything changed with cities in that area, it was to look at that area as a hub for high-earning tech-type businesses. Because when you look at JUDs, JUDs are based on income tax revenue. And that's why it was advantageous for Montville Township to avoid annexation by Medina City. And that's why it was advantageous for Montville Township to avoid annexation by Medina City for the Route 18 corridor, when both Cleveland Clinic and University Hospitals both proposed medical centers there. It was advantageous because you had two institutions with high wage earners who would be contributing to city taxes, of which Montville, because of the JUD agreement, gets a portion up. So again, it's not as simple as applying a JUD. It's important to look at the economics of it. It's important to look at the split of what the city tax would bring in and how that would be split between the city and perhaps a township. And again, to look at the type of businesses that you want included within that district that will actually result in a high business tax revenue for both communities.
Yeah, and the feasibility study was done 15 years ago. So it's, it's not anything that, you know, I would say, let's jump and do this right now. It's just something as a reference for us to start doing.
Well, yeah, and again, it was eight years ago that we talked with the planners at that time, specifically targeting that area down at 71, because there was a lot of chatter about things getting built in there. If you remember, there was going to be some development at that time through that area. There was a lot of chatter about that that hasn't resulted. But at some point, that terminus is going to become something. And you know, where Shamrick's is located, and that's Hinkley, Shamrick's is Hinkley. That, and if there was a change in what Brunswick Hills becomes, or Brunswick would annex that portion of Brunswick Hills, then that was identified as an area, not that I'm promoting that in any way, but that that was identified as an area in that Comprehensive Plan update that where a JUD discussion would be appropriate, because you could potentially have tech businesses there or, or professional businesses there. Now, since that time, a housing development has gone in, in that area across from there. So that's changed the landscape of that for potential, you know, uses of that, that area. But it's, it was kind of. You know, Aldi wasn't asking to be part of a JUD and neither was the Daigtry Properties. And then the largest area beyond that was identified as a cemetery, which made one question the validity of the study as a whole. That that was even included in the map.
Had a whole lot of income going on there.
Well, no, and I mean, it was like, we were there and Brunswick was there and, I mean, it was like, folks, it's cemetery. It is? I'm like, yeah, the majority of the area you have designated for a JUD district is a cemetery.
Thank you, Martha.
Thank you. Okay, at the last meeting, I noticed that you guys had discussed the November 7th meeting and I'm just asking you to reconsider. In the past, we have held a meeting in the senior room during an election. It was two years ago when both of you were running and we had significant issues connecting to wifi and doing anything virtually. So it's something for us to consider for that meeting. So I'm going to ask that you reconsider canceling or holding that meeting there.
Well, we held the one in the fire bay and it went okay, so I don't see an issue. I'd like to continue and just keep it in place.
Okay. And lastly, trustee Swedick, you made mention of a petition on August 1st meeting that circulated around town center regarding water infrastructure due to inaccuracies in the petition. You discredited it. I just wanted the public to know that my stance is a little bit different. I will not be discrediting any petition that I have not personally held in my hands. Further, I feel very strongly that petitions are a unique way for me to gauge public interest in a topic, as well as assist in better representing the people that I'm tasked to be a steward for. And so I will always do my best to see community engagement and public opinion. And if that comes in the form of a petition, I would love to see it.
I would welcome a petition as well, as long as the information is accurate and there's enough of it there to make an informed decision.
That's all I have.
Okay.
Okay.
Trustee Asher.
Um, so we have already approved that the Kimball, our final Kimball opt-out letter will be going out. The goal is to have that sent out by September 15th. And that is also going to include the survey that we created. So now we just need to purchase the postage, which we still don't have a quote on. So we know it's going to be more because postage went up from last year. Lynn has found about 47 new homes to add in there. So I just thought it would be safe to make a motion to purchase postage at a cost not to exceed $2,000 for the Kimball option and survey. Second.
Second by Augustine, any discussion? All in favor?
Hi.
You know, I do have a question. How do you want to do this? Do you want to authorize a check to be prepared outside of the regular meeting for that?
I think it has to be. Did we do a credit card that one time? Credit card authorization?
We talked about this today.
We used your credit card one time.
No, I wrote a personal check.
Oh, it was a personal check.
I wrote a personal check that was reimbursed because of the charges. So you guys can authorize.
Was that last year's? Because Lynn said last year, we actually paid them late last year.
Remember they, the check, the.
They lost it.
Lost the check. So this like, this whole thing is doomed.
Somebody lost it. We don't know if it was angel printing or the post office.
All I guess need to do is authorize the payment of such outside of the regular meeting. You already made a motion to appropriate the funds and.
So moved.
And then I'll just leave it there for you guys to sign it.
Perfect. Thank you, Martha.
Yeah, I think we might have done that at one point.
It is exactly right.
Yeah.
Okay, so moved. Second.
All in favor?
Hi. All right, Lynn wanted me to, there are copies of this at the table over there if anybody's looking for it. Lynn has gone to a lot of effort to try to clean up the mailing list just because of with our last couple of mailers that were sent out, there were people that did not receive it. So instead of reading all these different steps that she's gone to, there are copies of them and you each have a copy of it as well. But Lynn has really gone above and beyond to make sure that anyone that was possibly missed with the last two is added on. She's also removed, I think she said she removed about 59 that were like bad addresses and added in an additional 47. So she's really taken a lot of time to make sure that nobody will be missed on this or that the chances are much lower that anybody will be missed on this survey.
Do we have an opportunity in case someone is missed? I know this is something that we've been through. We keep getting this email from the sweet lady that was missed in the last thing that was mailed out. And I confirmed that her address is correct in our system now, but should this come up again? Do we have a backup way for these people to have a voice about the survey?
People will be missed. That's, it's part of any kind of a survey that goes out. You know, unless they update their records, you know, you can only do what we can do. We have the meetings, the information's in the paper, we have the website.
I mean, I can't imagine that it's a large number. I think last time we maybe missed six to 10 people. Is it possible for them to have a way to email us if we're going to accept this via email?
I would say if the response comes within the parameters of what we've established for this survey, then it gets accepted. If there, again, if there's a small number that's out, it's probably not going to change the number anyway.
Well, I just want to advocate for every person that lives in Hinkley.
I would say I'm, I am comfortable with if someone reaches out to us within the timeframe before it's due. So not the day after it's due, not, you know, the next week after it's due. But if someone reaches out to us within that timeframe and says, I did not receive the survey and they contact the township and Lynn can email them a form or we can have them come and pick up another form, then we can accept it, but it needs to be within that timeframe. Because to your point, people are going to get missed. We know that people are going to get missed. Lynn has really done a lot of work to help ensure that that number is much lower. But to your point as well, I think, you know, if we miss one person that wanted it, then that's too much. So I would say.
Put a two-day, put a deadline with a two-day grace period.
Well, I agree with trustee Asher that if they're contacting us before Friday, August 6th or October 6th, then that's, that's adequate to me. You know, I had a lot of people saying, oh, my gosh, I'm going on vacation. What if I don't get it in time and how am I going to submit? And this will give them an opportunity to do it within that timeframe electronically.
I will communicate that to the ladies.
Thank you. And Lynn has done a fantastic job. She was just going through just a couple of the things that she did with me the other day and I can't believe the amount of work that she's gone, gone into doing to make sure that we have.
Very thorough.
List. I appreciate it.
Okay, Kimball, the new rates, I'm sorry, not the new rates, but the new fuel surcharge will be hitting your bill for the July through the end of the year. So your quarterly bill that you will see with the fuel surcharge will be $73.84 per quarter for the unlimited service and $26.68 per quarter for the bag service. So that includes the fuel surcharge, which is $3.85 per quarter. Kimball is also delayed by a day because of the holiday this year, this week. So trash pickup will be on Saturday, not Friday. Lynn has asked me to publicly ask again to please pay your bills if you have not paid your bill yet with Kimball. One thing that I just wanted to share with you all today, in case you don't know about this or anybody else out there virtually, is that Kimball actually has the automated, the automatic payment on their website. So if you go in there and you create an online profile with them, you can actually set it up so it's automated. So it'll just take the money out of your account so you don't have to worry about doing, you know, getting delinquent on your bill. And I wanted to talk to you both about this because I know we have said in the past, you know, no other businesses, no websites on our website. But in the spirit of, you know, 95% of the township has to use Kimball services and it does take some township resources to try and help alleviate these delinquencies. What would you both think to Lynn adding into the banner for a week or whatever, the link to the automated payment system for Kimball? So that people could just sign into our website and click on the link and get themselves set up to help reduce delinquencies?
I think we have a Kimball button, don't we? You could even put it there as well. I have no problem with that. It's something that's forced on our residents and they should have access, easy access through our website.
Yeah, it's a township service. I'd be okay with it.
Okay. Thank you. It actually is simple to do also because I was one of those people. I got the second notice. Like, I gotta pay this bill. So I set it up today and it takes like two minutes to do it online. So now I don't have to worry about it anymore.
When people call the township, one of the first things that's stated on the recording is that they should call Kimball at this phone number if they have a Kimball thing. Maybe we should mention the website too, or that this is an opportunity for them in that recording.
I can ask about getting that added into the recording?
Thank you. I appreciate that.
I don't even know where that recording came from. But I will ask Lynn about that. Um. So something we had talked about about a year ago with the new website, when we did the website refresh, I wanted to pick your brains and see what you both thought about maybe kind of getting more community involvement with the town, you know, with the government and the township website. And what do you think about having a photo contest for, you know, like township used to do it, the best decorated house for Christmas, you know, maybe have a contest like that where the three best decorated homes for Christmas are showcased on our website and we show those three homes on the website? Maybe the Hinkley Record can, you know, they used to have that on the cover of the Hinkley Record was the best, best voted home. So I wanted to see, before I start doing some work on this, if you would both be open to that?
Yeah, and I think that that was something that you and I had talked about last year when we had started the website and I think it's a great idea.
Okay. And Lynn and Suzanne had put this on my agenda. So to give you a little bit of backstory with this. Someone contacted Suzanne about renting the old fire station, Bay, for a vintage like kind of trunk sale. So she was going to host a trunk sale and have other vendors come, kind of like a craft show type thing. It is a for-profit, so she would be renting the old fire station for a for-profit event, which we have nothing saying she can't do that. I personally don't have an issue with that, but they thought that we should discuss it as a board. So it's on my agenda, so I'm discussing it. We have nothing in.
Traditionally, it's a nonprofit or a citizen, correct?
And she is, she is a resident.
Can't she just do it the way a resident would normally do it?
I don't think there's anything that says you.
I would just run it to her like a resident.
Lynn asked me, I said, to ask you guys, but I would have to say that you can only put restrictions that you have written down and you don't have anything that doesn't allow this. It's just that they're not going to get a, you know, the rate will be different. You're not, I, I'm not quite sure if that even matters, to be honest.
The arts and crafts show has been there many times.
Well, they're a nonprofit.
Okay.
There, there's a difference there, but if you guys don't have anything in your rental agreement, there's nothing in the organizational limits.
Right.
As far as excluding.
As long as it's a resident.
It would have to be in rental agreement.
Yeah, I had no, I had no objection to it. I mean, it's.
I have no problem with it as long as it's a resident.
No, no problem.
It's the American dream. Work hard and get some money. Okay. That's all I had. Oh, and a reminder that we have the Township Shred Day at Hinkley Elementary School on Saturday, September 30th, from 9:00 AM till 1:00 PM. They will be shredding the nylon flags at 8:30 in the morning at the school prior to that. And also the Boy Scouts will be there selling popcorn for their fundraiser. Nylon, correct?
Yes.
Not vinyl. That's all I have.
For profit sale.
Yes.
I would just make sure that, something to consider in the future is that you might want to have proof of liability insurance or some type of coverage for that or just make sure that there's a waiver signed. Most nonprofits have their own liability coverage and I think that is a requirement on your form, if I'm not mistaken. So they may have to provide the township a rider or something that shows that they have covered the event.
Okay.
Because.
We have waivers available. Those templates are available.
We do have waivers, but if you, like for the chamber and for other groups, there's often a requirement that you see. often a requirement that you need to see their rider-
Right.
Or proof of liability insurance.
Good point.
I just made a note of it. I will talk to Lynn in the morning.
And it may be something to add to your agreement in the future.
Very good. Anything further?
That's it.
Okay, I would just update you that I'm trying to get something going again with the old fire station east wall. The architect's working a revised estimate that I said has to be doable. So we'll see where that comes in at, expect to hear it from him within the next week to 10 days, something on that.
Thank you. That time, that time's a charm. Fine, okay.
I think she just thinks so.
Thanks, Mike. I've been in contact with Ra regarding some of the stuff that they would like to have done at the ball fields this year. I'm working with Mike to see what we can do in-house. One of the things that they put back on the table was the renovation of the ball fields themselves, soil conditioning, that stuff. I'm inclined to go back to them and tell them, you know, a dollar amount that we would contribute towards that. Anybody have any idea what you want to go on that?
I had a similar conversation with them. They prepared a list for me because we were trying to culminate a list for the ARPA funding. And so I had reached out to them to see if there was anything of significance that maybe we could put on our list. I don't have that email in front of me. What is the number that you're thinking?
What was the total dollar amount for that?
It was a lot.
Yeah.
I think it's like-
I think it was like 15 a field.
Yeah.
Something like that. But I don't think, I mean, we've spent nothing this year depending on what Mike comes up with for the other items on the list because they were things we could do in-house. But I told him to be mindful of where he's pulling manpower from before he says, yeah, we can do that. So I want to see what he comes back at. If we need to use some of the money to do some of those things, I would probably $10,000.
That's what I was thinking. I would be comfortable with that.
All right, once Mike gets back to me then-
I'm sorry. So $10,000. So that would, that would not even cover the soil conditioning for one field, correct?
No, it could contribute towards it.
Right. And are we talking COBAC or are we talking youth?
Wherever they feel.
All number primarily COBAC.
COBAC is the one that's in really rough shape.
Okay.
Nice with the status of the Maple Hill driveway repaving.
It's funny that you ask that because I just wrote down for my next meeting to talk about the drive. We were talking about extending the drive, but Mike is having conversations right now with a couple of vendors about cost for repaving it.
Yeah.
He's still, he's still in conversation about repaving.
I know that. I mean-
You're talking about cost analysis?
Yeah, I mean, so I've had this conversation with Suzanne and Mike since last February. Same thing. So what, what do you guys want to do? Because some of it has to do with the direction you go on rock. You've got three improvement of sites lines. And the estimate that Mike got from Elway Terry last spring was $36,000 to do Maple Hill as it is now without any extensions.
Right.
So when you're talking about $10,000 for Ra, which I'm fine with, you guys have appropriated 20 for this year. And I don't think you spent hardly anything, if anything, last year on Ra. But you have to factor-
Did quite a fence for them last year. We did quite a fence for them last year.
Was that last year?
That was last year.
That was last year. And then dirt. That was the bonus. That was the bonus.
We bought dirt.
We bought-
Okay, shame on me.
Bought them a lie last year.
The driveway was, was the plan here because that paving hasn't gone down since March.
I'll speak with Mike.
Well, I mean, Mike is asking Terry for a price. I think you guys got to reach out to some other paving companies if you want to do it this year. And then what is, what's your plan if it comes in between 30 and $40,000 again? That's what I'm saying. Before you start making other promises on things, you need to look at the three improvement of sites lines and see how you want to appropriate those because they total $40,000. That includes Ra Cemetery and a broader improvement of sites line.
How much is cemetery?
I attend for cemetery.
That's what I thought.
And then give or take, there, there could be maybe 15 in cemetery line for contracted services. It just depends how we make out with the lawn mowing. So I'm just saying, you know, you need to factor that into this conversation.
Well, why don't we table the conversation until I can get ahold of Mike and have further conversation about the Maple Hill paving and we can get back to Ra.
I don't think, I mean, it's not Mike.
Well, Mike has been working on it for me.
We just need to figure out what we want to do.
Yeah, that's what-
We need to reach out to two other, we need to, we need to reach out to two other paving companies.
Yeah, I need to get pricing.
Well, already decided what do I do? Do you want to table us for next year or you want to not? That's, that's all I'm saying.
Well, we can just table it for this meeting and come back to it.
Very good.
Yeah, I don't even think we have 16,000 left in cemetery contracted services, to be honest. We got about 5,500.
All good. I'm going to move to go into executive session to briefly discuss a matter of play compensation at 7:28 PM.
Second.
Second by natural. Call the roll, please. Yes.
Yes.
Okay, we're back.
I said it would be brief and we're back. So I will move to come out of the executive decision, executive session with a decision to move forward on a timeframe for what we discussed at 7:30 PM.
Second.
Second by natural. All in favor of, call the roll, please.
Sweden?
Yes.
And Cheryl?
Yes.
Yes.
They're wondering if it was just a fire drill. They're like, did you guys actually talk about anything?
Anything from the public this evening?
Come on in.
Come up to the microphone.
How are you?
I'm doing well.
Good. Good to see you.
Well, we'll find out.
Thank you.
I'm not asking for anything. And the rest of you guys, I can pass this stuff out when you're done, when I'm done. The- Earlier this year, I became involved with this Moms Demand Action, this organization-
We just need your name for that.
Oh, yeah. Okay. Let's start with the bio. My name is Mike Holmberg. I've lived in this township for 23 years. I was a member of the fire department for 13 years and safety this community and everyone is very close to the top of the list of my concerns. 1470 Hinkley Hills Road. Got it? All right. So- Okay, so- Oh, really? Okay, all right, okay.
You're like, why am I talking to this microphone? Nobody can hear me.
Yeah. Anyway, so I became with this organization, Moms Demand Action. It's an organization of 10 million people. Not all of us are mothers, obviously, but you know, we could use some more guys. And they have started this program. It's called SMART. And this is not, this is about gun safety. It's not about repealing the Second Amendment, taking anybody's weapons away. This is about keeping people, children or vulnerable adults, safe from accidental and suicide. The, if you take a look briefly at this, like I said, I'll give you some more, pass out what I have and we're done. Every year, 700 kids die by suicide with a gun. When I was in high school, which was a long time ago, one of my classmates shot himself over bad grades. Of course, in those days, nobody thought about safety, about anything. More recent years, when my daughter was in middle school, a little boy shot himself, went out in the woods and shot himself. I don't know if anybody remembers that, but that did happen. And, you know, where does a kid get a gun? Okay, think about, go a little bit farther down. School shootings done by kids involved people getting guns that shouldn't have guns. Think of Sandy Hook. That was a kid that was, had problems. He stole the gun. Our own TJ Lane from Chardon, who was in prison in Grafton, stole the gun. The six-year-old down south that shot his teacher a few months back, the one up in Michigan that shut up the school. Why are these kids given access to guns? The, you may ever stole a parent or relative's home. So what we're promoting is keeping guns out of the hands of vulnerable adults and kids. Locks, gun safes, trigger locks, of making people responsible for handling of their own firearms. Now, as I said, I'm not asking you for anything, but yeah, I'm also a member of our Savior Lutheran Church. I approach council and we are going to have a program on October 24th and we're going to have a presentation given by moms for SMART, our SMART program. So at the very least, if we could put up on the sign in front of the historical society, when time gets a little bit closer, to advertise it. And I'm asking you maybe to tell your friends about it. If one person tells two people and two people tell two people, we can get this out. The very first program I went to on this SMART program, it was advertised on the website of Everytown USA or Moms and Stuff and four people showed up. I would like more people to show up, you know, especially from our township. I plan on going, trying to approach a PTO to get, to advertise it and the new school across the street to advertise it. And there'll be refreshments served by our own WELCA committee, which was on the front of the Hinkley Record this month. And I do plan on maybe making a little article and having it submitted to them. So I just want to make you aware of it and I appreciate your time. And that's it. Thank you very much.
You can, you can fill out a form. If you talk to the ladies in the front office, you can fill out a form and request to have something put on the sign at our, at the historical.
Okay, that's how that works. All right. Okay, it's not a township thing. Okay, I will do that. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Mike.
Is there a website?
Yeah, there's a website for SMART, Be Smart for Kids.
Well, I'll pass out these that I have and let's get them to-
Years back around the time of Sandy Hook, Chief Klapstie was still here and we, I think we applied for a grant for gun locks. I think we got them there. There may still be gun locks over at the PD, but we advertised for people to go over to the PD and pick up gun locks. Let's chief Sentner when he comes back because we, we initiated that also.
If you can send me an email, because I'll have, the chief will put it on their Facebook as well.
I'm Jesse LaCoche, chief. I was there 13 years. And I talked to him a little bit about it. And, you know, he was agreeable to make the presentation and drill. And I just got thinking, let's try and spread it out. So then I went to the church and-
Well, I think trustee Sweattick is speaking about the police chief, Sentner, and they have their own Facebook page where they can share your presentation at the Lutheran Church as well.
It's a great cause.
And for the record, the website that Mr. Pearl asked about is besmartforkids.org.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Good evening. Tom Schrader, Walden Ridge. Just, I've been out of pocket for about a month. I'm just curious, any updates on the annexation? Didn't see anything listed anywhere. Just kind of curious what's going on.
The appeal is still in process. It's in the courts.
Okay. Is there a date or anything that we know of? No?
At this time.
Okay. That's all. Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else? Please?
Jim Larson, 20 Car Road. I listened to his appeal and I'm neither for nor for or against it, but I find myself, I've got a significant surplus in gun locks. And I'd be happy to donate my gun locks to the chief for distribution to anybody who, you know, may want one or have them. And because I've been wondering what I'm going to, they're just sitting in the gun safe. So maybe that would help somebody who doesn't have any or can't find anyone to buy them.
I'll pass it along. Thank you.
That's great. Thanks, Jim.
Second question, 25 River Road. I'm neither for the cleanup or against the cleanup, but it's been going on for so long that I've really forgotten what the authority of the township is to make that cleanup, enforce the cleanup that so many people want. I know I was at a meeting with the chief of probably two or three weeks ago where he was organizing a number of vets, ex policemen, who would be willing to volunteer to help that homeowner clean up that place in stages, starting small and working up. And there are any number of people who would help him do that. But I was just curious, what authority do we have to cause that to happen? And then who else is in line? Because I've really never noticed as many rundown places as I have since the 25 River Road issue came up. And there are a lot- And there are a lot, although that's probably the poster boy for a rundown situation. Unless there's some public health or public safety issue, I'm trying to figure out what authority do we have to cause that place to be cleaned up by Fiat, by public Fiat? I mean, you know, the issue of noise, there's no real noise issues ordinances around. There's really no gun ordinances around as long as you do it safely. But we've picked out a place because it's a mess and it is a 14-carat mess. But there are any number of other places that are just as messy. And what are we going to do? We're going to just line all these people up? And you have to be consistent. Once you start on one, you've got to be consistent right on down the line. So I say I'm not for, for it or against it. I'm just wondering what authority does the township have to cause it to happen?
The state gives townships the authority to determine.
Section 505 of the revised code allows townships to clean up the property. And I stated in another meeting that we have a list of properties that are non-compliant and a nuisance. This one has actually gone to court with the Medina County Health Department. It is the worst one in the county, in our township, which is why we're approaching it first. But there is a list. We're not just picking and choosing. We're going in order of worst.
That's, and I haven't seen them all.
Yeah.
But I'm pretty certain it is the worst.
And we did a try to go to him first with the opportunity of the whole community working behind him and trying to come in and clean up. I offered it personally, myself, to him. I got phone calls from people in the community that wanted to be a part of assisting him. And we just got no response at all. And we can't just go on his property without his permission.
But I know the chief has kind of worked through his relatives. And there were, there were a surprising number of people at this very informal meeting. Chief's request, you know, was confirmed. And there are any number of people who helped, starting on small. It's, you know, if the public gets involved in helping clean it up, it's not going to take days, days or weeks. It's going to take months. But they're willing to do it over a period of time. And there's just a lot of people willing to help. And that's a dirty, rotten job because we've done jobs similar to that one before, but nothing close to the scope of that place. So, and, but anyway, I knew you mentioned it before. What authority? I just couldn't remember what it was. It's probably not a bad idea to keep that first and everyone's mind. So thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? To go to the order, I'll move to adjourn at 7:43 PM.
Second.
Second by natural. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, everyone.